By thirtieth, twenty twenty four, we're meeting virtually on Zoom. Getting started at five thirty-three. And with that, I will hand over to Cindy Becker for our presentation.
Thank you. Thank you all. And so, thanks for coming and we're going to be recording this session, Dominic, right? Okay, great. You're on mute, but that's fine.
Yeah, she's just recording this. We're good.
Okay, okay, great, thanks. So with the meeting invite came a couple of documents and I don't know if folks had the chance to review them. There was a PowerPoint and an overview. Did you all see those?
Well, there's something called the Recovery Center as part of the twelve-page document, but is there things beyond that?
There was a PowerPoint?
Yeah, that's what that is.
Right. And then there was an overview, a document.
I only got the one, one thing, twelve pages.
Okay, well, that's okay, because we're going to basically review. This is really a listening session and we recently had a meeting last week with some of the neighbors. And we're, you're not going to get a whole lot of answers. Basically, what we're doing is going to be listening for questions, comments, concerns, putting that all together and responding and responding to all of those. But we're not going to be responding to all those tonight. So I don't want people to get frustrated. I'll respond to some quick things if I can, but really want to listen to what you have to say in terms of questions, comments, and concerns. Okay? You do not have to wait for me till to finish because some of you know that I can talk forever. So just raise your hand or do whatever you do mechanically to make this happen. So the recovery set have, how many people have gone through the document? Just curious, anybody? Okay, okay, excuse me. His allergies are killing me. And so I just want to give a little background to how we got to where we are. About a year ago, the board, Michelle raised her hand. Okay, about a year ago, the board passed a resolution which really spoke to the support for recovery-oriented systems of care for people who were housed as well as people who are houseless. And the focus from that resolution that was passed, I think it was April of last year, really morphed to focus on people with substance use disorders. That is the term of art as opposed to people who are addicts. It is saying that people have substance use disorders. Following the resolution a year ago, the board initiated a summit, our Substance Use Disorders Summit that was held in last fall, I think it was September, October, where people from Canada, California, Texas, and Oregon were invited experts in the field professionally and/or people who are peers, people with lived experience, people who are in recovery. And this panel of folks interacted with the board, interacted with staff, as well as we invited a ray and array of community members from all different diverse folks. And okay, I just saw that post, sorry. And so we gained a lot of information and we issued a report which reflected what we had learned from that summit. One of the biggest pieces of, or the largest recommendation was developing a recovery-oriented center, an actual place for people to come for recovery. Let me tell you what a recovery center is not. It's not a shelter, it's not a drop-in center, and it's not a methadone clinic. A recovery center is really a destination where people come for long-term support and recovery. Typically, a recovery center will have beds for detox or withdrawal management, residential treatment beds, outpatient services, medical services, job training skills, and housing, transitional housing. And there are other, some other services that are in there as well. Part and parcel of the process or operation of a center is that peers have a heavy presence throughout someone's journey. So this is a place where people would come. They don't all have to start in one place, but their journey would take them through detox, through treatment, through outpatient services, through not only job training, but job placement and the support services that are needed to help them recover and return to their communities. The important piece about a recovery center, different than we've done in the past, that the system, the S U D system has been very reactive. And so you come in for your treatment and you've done your twenty sessions and you wished well and goodbye and we hope things work well. We're really talking about a long-term commitment and a journey. And when people are ready to move back into the community, that they're continue to provide that support. They're not kind of left off and said, okay, you know, hope we don't see you again. But there's that, I call it the tail. So the recovery center and the support will continue to help that person reestablish. There would be transitional housing on the site so that people, once they're going through the different processes and getting the different supports, that they have a place to stabilize. And the transitional housing could actually be up to a year. And so then during that time where folks will be looking for permanent housing for them so that they can again move back to their communities, have a place to live, have a job to go to, have the supports they need to be able to be successful and thrive back in their community and hopefully back with their families as well. So if that's, that's really what a recovery center is. It's not a, it's not a one and done. It's not a one stop shop and it's not a shelter. So the other pieces, one of the key parts that's really important at a recovery center, what's so needed here is immediate access. One of the things we found, we talked to providers, we've talked to peers, we've talked to experts in this field. When somebody with substance use disorders is ready for treatment, you can't say, we'll have something open for in two weeks, hold on. Immediate access is critical for them to start their journey. We don't have a lot of places in the county or in the state, quite honestly, that have immediate access. There are wait lists, there are people waiting for various different parts. This, we have a system that's made up of components, but not necessarily made up as a system. And that's what we're talking about. The recovery-oriented center would exist within a recovery-oriented system. Other things that the county is doing is we're developing a twenty-three-hour crisis stabilization center, which will be in Milwaukee. Also, a navigation center is being developed in Oregon City. That center will focus on people who are houseless and help them kind of connect to other services. So the recovery center that we're talking about is really part of a larger system. The center initially will be looking at, focusing on adult men and women. They're the folks that we most hear about and the folks most in need right now. And we're also going to be looking at, a key piece of this is safety of the individuals who are coming to the center, safety of the staff, and safety of the community. That will be of paramount importance. I know that's important to everybody who we chat with and I, trust me, it'll be, it'll be front and center in the center. The center will be operated by community-based providers. The county will be investing one-time startup dollars to, excuse me, to facility development. But the actual operations will be paid for by coordinated care organizations for people who are Medicaid eligible. And there's two major coordinated care organizations in the region, in our county. And those who are not Medicaid eligible will be eligible for payment from the state that has certain funding streams for that. So the operations will be taken care of by those existing funding streams. And then the county is working on investing supported housing dollars and other funds working with partners to invest in that one-time startup money for the, for facility operations. One of the other benefits not only to the, to the people coming to the recovery center, but it will also impact the law enforcement and medical systems. Right now, because there aren't these services, people are being inappropriately placed in jails and in emergency departments because there's no place for them to go. And so what we're offering through this recovery center is an appropriate place for people to get the help they need when they need it. So I'm going to give you a quick trip through the data because I think it's important to have that backdrop. And let me hold on. Can you see it, everybody? Yes? Okay, great. So you, you read the papers, you're here in the news, you're talking about it with your friends and colleagues. The growth, unprecedented growth in drugs across the country has just been hitting us all in the face. And the percent change in Oregon is thirty-four percent. Oregon now ranks second in the country for substance use disorders. The prevalence, there have been a lot of studies that have recently been done by Oregon Health Authority, by O H S U, by Portland State University, looking at prevalence of substance use disorders across the state. And then they break the information down by county. So not only the prevalence of the disorders, but also the service gaps that are currently in existence. So this is in Clackamas County. Again, this is from a twenty-twenty-two study by O H S U and P S U that unmet substance use disorder needs sixty-five thousand people in Clackamas County. They're not receiving treatment in a special facility for substance use. So the overall gap in services is sixty-eight percent. That doesn't mean that there, that sixty-eight percent of the people are missing any services. They're not getting the, the full array of services that they need. So they may be getting a little piece here and a little piece there, but they're not getting the array of services that would really be useful for them to recover. So just a couple of data points, a number of drug-induced fatalities among Clackamas residents. You can see for the twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two, how that has grown from forty-three to ninety-seven. And then this really shows you what's happened in the drug scene. It used to be that people were only concerned about opioids or really only concerned about heroin. Not that they're not, but look at fentanyl. The, the use of fentanyl has just skyrocketed, again, not just in Clackamas, around the state and around the country. You can see the rate of drug-induced fatalities. You can see where it is in locations in the county. And this area here, Milwaukee, Happy Valley, unincorporated Clackamas and Oregon City is really some of the deeper blue and some of the largest number or rate of fatalities. This shows you in terms of the number of drug overdose-related calls. Milwaukee, Oregon City, Happy Valley, and unincorporated Clackamas are the highest areas of drug-related overdose calls from in twenty-two and twenty-three. So it's here and it's here among us. Yes, Lisa?
So on the previous slide, you showed it by zip code. So is this table also by zip code? So when you say Milwaukee, you mean nine seven two two two? Because we have people all the time who think they live in Milwaukee and they live almost to Gladstone.
So to be honest with you, I'll have to, I'll have to ask. I got this information from public health and I'm not quite sure which source they use for which. I know that we had some questions about the Happy Valley data up here. And there was concern about zip code versus census tract, so I can find that information for you.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
This shows you what's happening with S U D-related emergency department visits. We looked at Providence, Milwaukee, and Willamette Falls. We have not received the data yet from Kaiser. But again, this just gives you an example of, you know, how these numbers are changing and how large they are. Again, this is not fentanyl, but it shows you for meth-related visits and opioid-related visits. This is across all the U D visits in Providence hospitals by types of drugs. So, I mean, I'm not telling you anything that you haven't already heard, but here's just the data behind that. And then in the jail, you know, at any given point in the jail, there's probably at least fifty percent, if not more, of people who are there that have a substance use disorder. And many of them, if not most of them, also have a mental health challenges. We have, and Health Share is a coordinated care organization. That's the organization that receives Medicaid dollars. And they receive, they're the largest coordinated care organization in Clackamas County. And this was just to show you that about forty-five hundred members of their members have substance abuse disorder in, from Clackamas County. And about thirty percent of them have not received any treatment in the past twelve months. So just because you receive Medicaid, there's no mandate that you have to get treatment. Like, this is just some more data about that. I'm not going to go through all of it. Again, about thirty percent of individuals are not receiving all the services they need. And you can see that these, they have these types of drug disorders, but they're not receiving the mental health services and all of the complement of substance use services that they need. This is also reflects housing insecurity. Again, people who have housing insecurity, they could be, they could be houseless or they could be on the verge of being houseless. About seventy-five percent of them are not receiving the services they need. This is a snapshot just from Clackamas Health Centers, which is the largest provider in the county. And the thing that's important, people think it's just houseless people. And you can see here that about fifty percent of the people served have a place to live. So it's not just people who are quote-unquote on the streets. And you can see the various drugs. I mean, alcohol is right up there, cannabis, opioids, et cetera. So we talked to a lot of different people about what they felt the identified needs were of this population. Again, referring to the addiction summit panelists, the how, the health, housing, and human services staff, peers, providers, and then external studies. And you can see some of the ones that across the board, everybody felt was important. Detox withdrawal facilities. The only detox withdrawal we have are in Multnomah County. There isn't anything in Clackamas County. There's a waiting list. There's people waiting outside all the time for those services. Immediate access, obviously critical. Also, some other areas, recovery housing. Again, it's important, again, that people not just get outpatient services or treatment services. They have a place to live and recovery housing is critical for individuals going through their recovery journey. Medication-assisted treatment. Medication-assisted treatment has come a long ways. And it's not available as much as it needs to be. Not, not all of the physicians who are in our community are able to or want to give Medicaid assisted treatment, medication assisted treatment. It's a really critical tool for people in recovery. So the next steps, and this is where we're here, the board is considering purchasing the six-acre site currently owned by N C P R D. Any questions about the PowerPoint? Am I going too fast? By the way, tell me if I am. Grover.
Thanks. Yeah, I was curious. You mentioned the part about no recovery facilities. Is this considered a recovery facility or no?
We're talking about developing, yes, a recovery center, yes.
Yeah, so this would actually be a detox-related.
Yes.
Yeah, that part wasn't clear because you said there are none except in Multnomah, so this would fill that bill.
Correct.
It was a great presentation, other than I missed that. And so thank you for clarifying that.
Washington County is also building recovery centers. There's, there's like, there's three different models for recovery centers. One is that everything contained in one building. One is that there's different services in different buildings, which is really the Washington County model. And then we're looking at a campus model, so people can go through their recovery journey and the different pieces of that and the different parts, the different services in the same vicinity. So they could get those supports. We're looking at probably a clinic-based building and then transitional housing on the site. So while people are in transitional housing, they can also get the outpatient services. And, and those services are for the people who are going to the center.
And the second part of that question is, is I've been reading about the plans that are currently coming up before the Board of County Commissioners for the center in North, North Milwaukee.
The crisis stabilization, yes.
Right. It's got the north side and the south side, et cetera. So this is integrated with that as far as they, they're, they're coordinated, so they don't do overlap, et cetera.
That's what the intent is. One of the things we, we are meeting with, there's several different areas. One is we think it's really important to really provide a visual for people to kind of see all of this stuff. And, and we're going to need to do a lot of education because we don't want people to get confused. It's like, where do I go? Do I go to the crisis stabilization? Do I go to navigation? Do I go to recovery center? So we have a lot of work to do. And another important piece of this is the coordination between not only these three centers, but the other parts of the system. Not only in, in referring people and we're not talking about, you know, much of what happens in referral is someone's given a card and said, go call these people.
Yeah, right.
Talking about warm handoffs, transporting people. And so that there's really a very engaged wraparound system around each of those folks. And so there may be some people go from the navigation center, they may go to the recovery center, or they may go to the crisis stabilization. So part of our, our job is to make sure that we're clear. The other part of that is going to be, how do we, how do we collaborate and about the individuals? And, and what kind of data sharing do we do? There's a lot of federal restrictions on that. So we have to make sure that we can do it in a way that's respectful and, oh, by the way, legal. So we're working on all those pieces as well.
And then my last question had to do with capacity for actually all three, the North-South. And then this, this as a, assuming it's in, what, what is the capacity?
So the answer to the question, we're looking at this meeting be lasting an hour. Sorry, I don't really have the capacity on the other center. I know there was a meeting on it today and I just don't have it with me. In terms of the recovery center, right now, we're looking at probably about eight to ten beds of detox and about twenty residential treatment beds. And then outpatient services for around fifty and then transitional housing, probably around thirty. So the other thing we're looking at is really a phased-in approach. So we're going to be building the components of this recovery center and then really looking at how we bring that all together. So not, not everything's going to be ready the same day. And so after, what's going to happen next is that there's this scheduled policy session on August seventh with the board. And we're going to be talking about whether or not the board is going to direct staff to proceed with purchasing the site. If the board does direct staff to do that, we will come back in September with all the, the paper documents that we need to do that. And then we will issue what's called a NOFO. It's a Notice of Funding Opportunity. And that Notice of Funding Opportunity will be issued to the private sector to give us proposals on development and operation of the site. Jeanette, Jim, question?
Yes, thank you. And I think I just need a recap. So the, the August seventh is when this proposal goes to the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and it's, can you remind me, there's a, there's a, there's another meeting, I think this Thursday? Is that, am I remembering that right? Or was it last, last Thursday?
It was last Thursday. We met, yes, we, we met last Thursday.
Okay, so, so on, on July twenty-fifth, okay.
Like this meeting, we, we spent the time listening and then we're putting together the comments and questions and we'll be sending them out. We also, there is also a recovery center page on our website. So we'll also be posting the information there as well. So I'm going to stop talking and I want to hear from y'all. Questions, comments, concerns?
Okay, Sheila? Yes, I think what I would like to hear again is the explanation that you gave about the different facets of the program. You know, you talked about there's a detox. If you could, you could again talk about, I think there's like five different categories that, that'll be, the services offered there. If you could do just like a kind of a recap of that.
Sure, 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 sure. So we're looking at detox, residential treatment, outpatient people, for people with substance use disorders. And they may have mental health challenges as well. Again, that the primary population is people with substance use disorders. And then we're also, other services will be job training and job placement, care coordination, medication, medication-assisted treatment, transitional housing, and then working with peers. People, again, people with lived experience and mentors who will be really from the time the person walks through the door and has the assessment and, and triage. They will be there through the time people leave and go back into the community.
And you mentioned that there's two different groups that will be providing these services?
So what we're looking at is we're, we would be contracting with a primary, I call it a primary provider. We're looking at multiple providers coming on site to provide services. Because we want the, you know, some people, some providers are great at some things and some are great at others. So it's kind of, I don't know if you're familiar with the Family Justice Center, which is a facility for people, survivors of domestic violence. And they have a whole range of services in one place so that those individuals don't have to go all around the county to find them. Similar to that, the recovery center will be one place and there will be different providers offering services at that place, bringing them to the individuals who are there.
Okay, that clarifies because I was wondering about the coordination of that. But they are, they will be each doing a specific thing rather than overlapping. Okay, thank you very much. That's helpful.
You bet, you bet. Thank you. Let's see. Is this open for public comment? That's really up to the D A C. Any other comments? Grover?
Yeah, since there's, oh, well, I let Missouri go first if, because I've talked a bunch, but all right, let me make a quick question. I am curious, assuming this is sold out of N C P R D resources, the question then becomes, I appreciate your checking with the people in the local community there. This is quite important. But in addition to that, I'm curious, is there any clarity? So the funds, whatever that exchange is, will then be available for N C P R D to replace and/or use to, to accomplish other things that meet the goal of N C P R D?
Yes, yes, the county would pay N C P R D for the property.
And N C P R D then has the, the capacity to use that for, for whatever N C P R D chooses as its best and highest needs, right?
Yes. Missouri, question?
Yeah, sorry, I was late. So I don't, hopefully this wasn't answered, or if it was, I'm, I'm sorry. Was, has an appraisal been done on the property? And if so, how much is that? Then my follow-up question, which I'm completely blanking on, which is very unfortunate. If you could, if you could answer, I'm sure it'll come back to my mind.
The appraisal of the property has been done. And it was, I have to get the exact numbers. It was around two point six.
Okay, and the county is going to pay for this via the supportive housing services dollars that people are paying into?
There's actually a combination of funds that the county is using.
Okay, and that combination has been, list has been provided or has yet to be, is it going to be provided? I guess I'll start there.
At the time of the sale, yes.
Okay, not until then, though.
No, because there's different. No. And not, not that it's a secret, it's just that we're kind of, there's different funding streams. We have to make sure that we're doing the right thing for each funding stream and, and then grading them all together.
Okay, will we be told what percentage of what funds prior to then are interests are going to be used? Or, I'm sorry for harping on this question, I apologize. And I, I'm assuming a lot of you can't reveal due to legal proceedings. But I'm like, for instance, is it going to be fifty percent from supportive housing services or fifty percent from another fund? Something along those lines?
The supportive housing services has gone before the board in public policy session and has talked about setting aside dollars for recovery services. And so they've talked about, I think it's a total of about seventeen million, but ten of that, ten million approximately, again, because things are changing. So this was a couple of months ago. Approximately ten million would go towards a recovery center. But the supportive housing services dollars continue to change from a revenue standpoint. And so everything will continue to be brought before the board to discuss.
Okay, thank you.
Jeanette, question?
Yes, thank you. And this is a lot to verify my understanding. So my, my understanding is the So my, my understanding is the Clackamas Elementary School site came to be owned by North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District as part of the 2018 strategic partnership. So it was purchased from North Clackamas School District. And there was the current tenant, the charter school previously, and that tenant remained from 2018 going forward until they, they needed to move recently. It's, I'm not as clear, you know, there was the notion that the properties, there were three properties involved. They would be revitalized and repurposed for public uses. I, I think that was the intention, but a lot changed since then, including COVID-19 and big changes in our communities. So, you know, I think what I wanted to sort of nail down is that was this site never sort of formally turned into a community center or a different sort of park because there wasn't funding available or were there other dynamics at play?
I'll be honest with you, I don't know. And it's something we'll have to get back to folks on when we do the FAQs. Yeah, I just don't know.
Okay, and that's totally fine. Thank you.
Other comments from DAC?
Thank you for keeping an eye on the hands, Cindy. Appreciate it.
Lisa?
You're on mute.
Yeah, sorry about that. I, um, yeah, I've spent a lot of time, I drove out to the property, looked around, you know, I've looked at some of the stuff and I unfortunately couldn't come to the meeting last Thursday. I would like to have been there. I applaud the county commissioners for wanting to build a recovery center. We need those resources in our county. And I see, I, I mean, I, I think this location is kind of funny because it's, I mean, given all the sort of outpatient service type services that you outlined, that it's not just residential, but it's going to be sort of continuing outpatient services. It's an area that is not well-served by bus lines. It has one, like a bus every 45 minutes and only sort of during the core hours of the day. That said, if, I mean, I, I guess it doesn't strike me as a great place for this, but if it's what we have, I don't want the, if the county commissioners have not found another place, I don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good. I mean, it is important to get these resources online. I look at it as a member of the DAC that Clack, that NCPRD has to get a fair price for this. And I just saw the comment in chat about an $8 million offer. So I trust that all of that will be daylighted before any decision is made here and we will have access to that. And was there really an $8 million offer? What does the, I, I also spoke with the county commissioner about this and I guess I came away from that meeting with the impression that the, the appraisal was a higher dollar figure, about a million dollars higher than what's in the reference. So I trust that all of that is going to be made public and be transparent and be out there for everyone to see.
Yes, and, and one thing I do want to make clear, the outpatient services are primarily for the people who are at the recovery center. So we don't see people just coming for outpatient services from the community.
But I mean, if it's outpatient, it means they finished their residential treatment, right? So they're coming back.
Right, but we also are going to have transitional housing on site.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that, that's kind of the intent at this point. Obviously, you know, we're very interested in having providers who serve this population. And there are some really fabulous providers with deep experience. And so they're going to really bring boots on the ground in terms of how all these things should work together, but that's the intent. Commissioner?
Yeah, I just want to just share that we first heard, you know, in the audience after the Thursday night event, after it was finished, some of the audience members came up and mentioned the $8 million figure. We never heard of that. We tracked it down since. There's no such offer that we ever received. And our staff know that if any offer comes to the county or the district, there's an obligation for that to be daylighted to the board, but no such offer has been made. So there, there's no, I'm, you know, like, so we're all surprised by that.
Yeah, yeah. Did you have another comment, Commissioner?
Nope, that was it.
Okay, somebody else raised their hand there?
I, I did. Thank you, Jeanette here. So can you explain it? Like, I don't know real estate very well because I, I don't. I, I'm passionate about parks. But there's, there's sort of the assessed value of a property and that's one thing. And then there's what a sale price could be. That's a different thing. So there was this, the sale price initially, and then there's an appraisal value. What's a good, can you, can you dive deep into that? If, if, if the proceeds are going directly to the district and the district advisory committee is here to sort of look out for the interests of the district and make a recommendation accordingly, what would you advise? Would, would you say like Mayor Beatty that we, we want to try to get a great value? Or is it a matter of looking holistically at the community? And maybe there's some intangibles that we should also consider?
I think it's a great question. It's a great comment and it's, I'm not a Realtor either. And so I think it's again, something we will include in the, in the response back. Thank you. Musiri?
Hi, sorry not to harp back on the same question a few people are asking. Has the property been listed for sale to seek other bids?
No.
Will the property be listed for sale to seek other bids? I'm not trying to negate the fact of what the mayor has said of, yes, we need supportive housing services. We need these resources. But as a DAC member, not to get greedy, just opening up that question.
I can't, I can't answer that, whether the, I mean, right now, the board is considering purchasing this site. Whether or not they would invite others in, I, that's up to the board. I just can't answer that. Sorry. Grover?
Yeah, I, I can't help but noticing in the chat, et cetera, that the concerns. Could somebody give a comment about the concerns? I, I remember hearing the whole thing about turnkey 2.0 and all the people that were thinking the, the zombies were coming and life would be unsafe and you couldn't walk on the streets, et cetera. And, and now the concern that, well, there's people who live in the area that this and that. This is not a place where there's going to be a lot of security issues or there's not going to be a lot of people escaping and, because this, how do you get into detox? You have to choose to and then you participate in it. And I got 25 years working with people who have made those similar kinds of commitments and interests. And it doesn't have that kind of concern or violence or, or threat. But I, I, I'm really concerned by people in the Zoom, in the, in the chat implying that that's a danger. So can you speak to how safe this is going to be for the surrounding neighborhood? And if you can't now, can we get a person or persons who do have that to make that a public comment, published, et cetera? Because people are pretending or, or, or reacting like it's highly threatening.
And you know, and everyone's got legitimate issues and legitimate concerns. I know there's the community of We Built, who were at the meeting last week, were the majority of the actual participants. We Built, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it is a community of, of homes and a living, a place to live for people, primarily people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, primarily autism. Some of the parents and other relatives live in the location. Some of them have bought that for their relatives. They're the ones that have expressed primary concern. Look, I don't think you'll find anybody on the, on this earth who's going to say, I want a recovery center next to me. So I think it's something that, but they're concerned because of the particular sensitivity of their, of their children. They're very concerned about their freedoms being impinged upon, if you will. And so this, as Grover said, this center people is, is for people who want to go into recovery. And so, as I said, it's not a shelter. It's not a hangout place for people that's kind of come and go. It is a destination for people who want to come into recovery and to go through the recovery journey. If people want to leave, we're not going to just open the door and say, see you, bye. Again, there will be transportation, there will be processes for these things to be happened, which will be very open. I think that the folks are going through this journey are, are, as there is, actually, there are several people who are in recovery here at the meeting last week. And they, you know, they wanted to make sure that people understood that they were people and their sons and daughters and, you know, wives and husbands and that the person who wants to come to a recovery center for, to go through recovery is very different than the stereotypical person they see on the news. And that, that said, as I said at the very beginning, safety of the community, the staff and the individuals who are going through recovery is paramount. And we will take the necessary steps to make sure that is front and center. I can't tell you what all those steps are now, but as I said, we are going to be working with very seasoned providers who do this and to help us make sure that happens. As we get more information, we will definitely share that with folks. Commissioner?
Yeah, I just want to amplify that point. We heard the community Thursday evening. I know this area very well. I have some friends that have some businesses on this area. Today, it's, it is a high crime area, higher, not higher than most, but higher than many. And it is currently got some challenges in that regard. So we made a commitment, we always do, whether we do transitional housing or whatever we do, that we will make it safe or safer than it is today. And we have what we called a good neighbor agreement, and that was also announced at that meeting. So we will make that commitment to the community that it will be as safe or safer. And I'm, I'm leaning on safer than it is today because I already know what the, what the current circumstances are there right now. That's all I have.
Yep, thank you. DAC members, we have 15 minutes left. Do you have other comments? Do you want to open it up to those folks in the chat? Bring, tell, whatever you'd like, let me know.
I just want to clarify, in my request, it is that there is actually something that addresses how much of what Commissioner Savis just spoke of, but also my own experience, how much attention on security, not having people running out into the neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera, from this center, but actually being a coordinated thing. And, and, and I think that's important to make that a public document for people to see based on facts, based on reality, based on, because I truly, when I listen to that turning point 2.0, it, it, two thirds of the people did not listen to what any of the officials, the experts had to say. And they all pretty much parroted the same concern. I'm not suggesting anybody in this conversation is that way. But facts and reality from, from, from qualified sources can be helpful. So that's, I just want to make sure that request is heard. Thanks.
Yeah. Lisa?
I just want to sort of second what, where Musiri was going about. I mean, I don't know if you list the property because that's a, you know, that may be seen as bait and switch or something, but, but I think more than one, I think, given what we're hearing, more than one appraisal is probably needed. And, you know, I guess for the people online who know somebody, you know, know this community that wanted to buy it, you know, putting that out there on the public record, what they wanted to buy it and what they were willing to pay for it. I do think, you know, as DAC members, our interest is in making sure the district gets the most value for the property. Yeah.
Very, thank you. Anna?
Yes, I wanted to ask Commissioner Savis for a little more specifics about how you make the community safer, safer, what you're picturing.
The best example I can use is when we initiated the door-to-door, business-to-business effort to launch the concept of the, what's now the Veterans Village today. And I all, I too knew, again, people in the area that are, that I've known, bit local businesses and folks. And so every, everyone that Commissioner Schrader and staff, we, everyone we talked to was against the project. And in that area, it was, they were all talking about the current crime. And we assured them that we would probably make it safer. And, or we will shut the whole thing down. So what, what basically on that, that we really did was we, with all the staff present there 24/7 at the Veterans Village and all the, all the support services, we had eyes and ears everywhere. And we did our best to clean that area up and crime was reduced. Our presence was there. When there was an issue, we had law enforcement because they're going to take our calls, obviously. They're connected to the county. And we were highly successful. In fact, they were appreciative. And those businesses, when even so far as even hire some of the people that came out of the Veterans Village. So we employ the good neighbor and we are currently doing that. Sure, there's always going to be maybe an incident here and there, but for the most part, it's, it's drastically improved.
Thank you.
But it, it is that, what we call, it is that relationship between our law enforcement and our facility and the DA and what we call the neighborhood livability project. And we have a number of tools where, again, we saturate the area with, with cleaning the area up and with the, the goal of cleaning the area up and reducing crime considerably. It's worked.
So we have 10 minutes left. Jeanette, do you want to open this up or do you want to continue with DAC?
Well, yes, please. I wanted to, to clarify that the meeting is scheduled until 7:00 PM.
Oh, it is?
It is.
All right.
So that there was one hour set aside for district advisory committee discussion of the potential sale of this district-owned property. My suggestion as chair is that we would cede that time to public comment and go to public comment period. So I'll, I'll make that as, as like a motion. And if there's any objections, we can continue the Q and A. Just pausing to give a moment. Okay. So thank, thank you all and thank you, Cindy Becker, for the presentation to help share this information and answer our questions. So that will, that means as chair, I will open up the public comment period. And because we are on Zoom, what I will ask is that attendees who wish to give comment, please raise your hand on Zoom. I will also suggest that that if you need help, if you've typed in your response and you, you can't, you, you can't, or it wouldn't be comfortable to verbalize that, please let us know so that we can make sure your comments are captured. I'll pause there. Public comment will be three minutes. When you're called on, please introduce yourself and your area of residence within the district. Or if you're outside of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, then I'll have a timer for you.
Jeanette, before we go to that, just quickly, just want to make everyone aware, I need to check out just a little bit after 6:30. So I'll be attending for about another eight to 10 minutes. And, and thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you, Director. So Jessica, may I ask for an assist? I'm looking for the raised hands on Zoom. I may need you to help me with that. I may need you to help me with that.
I don't currently see anyone with their hand raised. The feature to raise your hand is at the bottom of your, your Zoom screen if anyone is interested in providing a public comment.
Here we have Dean's iPhone and one other hand raised. So, Dean?
Just a second.
We're getting an echo, we can't hear you.
So so I'm concerned about the the residents of the We Built community mixing with the residents of the detox facility. And I realize at one time you say it's going to be voluntary, but it seems like these will be people that are maybe dropped off by the police or have had a choice of either going to jail or going to detox, which doesn't seem very voluntary to me. Then you said that it wouldn't be a lockdown facility, but they're, they wouldn't be able to leave. And I'm just wondering is, would, would they be able to leave? Or not be able to leave?
So a couple of things, if they, if they want to leave the facility, it's not locked down. Then there would be trans, there would be transportation to where they came from, not just see you bye. So if, and again, this is not, I don't know if you've heard about the, what's called a deflection center, which is the, is the current language being used now, the legislature, when they changed measure one-ten, they created these deflection centers for people, for, for law enforcement to bring people to instead of jail. This is not a deflection center. And so this is, again, it'd be voluntary for people who want to come to it. So part of this, there's, there's a lot of vocabulary being used and a lot of information that I think we need to put in front of people to help them understand what the relationships are and, and the types of people who are expected to be at each of these types of services.
So would, would those answers be provided before the the no notice of funding opportunity goes out in September?
Hopefully, yeah.
It's, it seems like, it seems like we should have our questions answered before we start funding the project. It also seems like if the Parks and Rec District is interested in maximizing their return on their investment, that they should make this an open bidding process for the, for the land so that, you know, it's, it's, I'm not questioning the value of your assessment, but some of the other property around there that's been assessed, has been assessed at much higher values than that. And I'm pretty sure that they could get more than two point six million dollars for that property. So it seems like Parks and Rec could fund themselves for many years into the future, just by selling this property to the highest bidder.
Thank you. Okay, did we have another hand raised? I think.
Yes, thank you. I have to click on two places. Thanks for bearing with me. I'd like to ask Bill and Sandra to go ahead and unmute and comment. And you have three minutes?
Thank you for the opportunity. The reassurance that the neighborhood would be safer because of increased police presence is not at all reassuring. There is a long and tragic history of police shooting people with autism because they do not respond in the way that police expect. They freeze, they flee, they can't process quickly. And it is horrifying to think that someone who's just trying to walk to the bus stop or to the corner store, whereas before, yes, they may have run into a homeless person. But now it's going to be a cop who is shouting at them. And if they don't respond in the way the police officer expects, they will be at risk. I, I'd like to hear why this already vulnerable population should be made more at risk. Will anyone respond?
I'm sorry?
I'm waiting to hear why this choice in an entire county is the only choice.
Well, as I said, we'll be responding to a lot of these comments. We, we won't be responding to everything tonight.
In other words, it, we're overreacting. When already autistic people are seven times more likely than neurotypical people to be having encounters with the police. Or first responders. Elijah McCain was killed by first responders.
I don't want, I don't want you to think because we're not responding that we're diminishing your concerns. We have heard them, we are hearing them, and I can assure you that if the board decides to purchase this property, we will be setting up specific neighbor task groups to talk through a lot of these issues and how we can improve all of this. But, so I just don't want you to think you're not being heard.
No. I, I don't know if I still have time, but I will point out that this does put the residents of Clackamas County at risk. If someone is hurt by police on site at that unit, at that recovery center, they'll be sued. Nothing like killing your kid to make you kind of ready for a fight. Cede the rest of my time. Could you?
Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. I'm looking at the, the screen and I'm struggling a little bit. Thank you for bearing with me. I don't see any additional hands raised. Just want to give a couple more moments if there's any additional comments.
Sheila?
I'm wondering where this property is that Sandra is referring to is in relation to the property that we're discussing.
I'm not, I'm not a great direction person, so can someone describe it? The comment says one block away, but if you could give us an exact address, I think that would be helpful.
Thank you for the help with address.
So I think if I can show this. So here is the property here. And this is not part of the property. It's around here and then We Built is here, right there. So here's Tolbert and then obviously two oh five, but this is not the property. So the property goes kind of like this and around like this. This. So Ninety Second here and over and then cuts in over there. This again is not part of the property. Thank you. To help?
And I'd like to point that Mr. Siri has his hand up and then we have an attendee who will come next. Thank you. Go ahead and unmute, Mr. Siri.
Thank you. So I'll be fast. Just to clarify for people who might not be aware, so we, the DAC, to be frank, are effectively powerless. It is the directors, so Director Savis, who might have just left the meeting and also known as your BCC, the Board of County Commissioners, they're effectively the ones at the end of the day who get the vote and actually get to make the decisions. So if you are passionate about any of these topics, we hear you and we can take this message to our DAC meetings or to, 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 to the BCC ourselves or the directors, but you, the individuals going to their meetings and telling them this, the ones with the actual power would be advised as a suggestion to, to, to show this energy to the people themselves who can actually make the decisions, just putting that out there.
Thank you. Yes, we, we are certainly an advisory committee. I saw a question in the chat, but first I wanted to go to, to Bill and Sandra. If you'd like to have a follow-up, we can, we can give three minutes.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify, when you asked about the location of We Built in relation to the school grounds. An important point to note is that there is no route to a bus stop. You know, the whole point of this community is to try to help the residents learn to live as independently as possible. And so if they want to walk to a bus stop, they will have to walk past some aspect of this recovery center. Because all three of the side streets adjoin the Southeast Tolbert, you know, in the same area as the recovery center. So they will, they, they can't, even if they decide they'll walk three blocks, blocks out of their way to get to another bus stop, they will still have to walk by some aspect of the recovery center. And I don't know what a lockdown situation is like where, or what the police presence, presence could be. But it seems like it could affect the entire grounds. Thanks.
Thank you. I needed to go off camera. I'm still here with you in the meeting. And I see there's a hand raised for Dean's iPhone. So I'll invite you to comment for three minutes and then, and then at that point, I think we should work to wrap it up before my battery dies.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So if you look on the, the handouts from the meeting, there was an aerial view of the map, an aerial view of the property that shows the outline of the property. And at, you know, Tolbert is a dead end and We Built is at the end of the dead end. So to go out of We Built, you have to go buy the property. And then there's a little, it's not a perfectly rectangular area. There's a part that's cut out. We Built currently rents two of those three, there's, I guess there's four houses there on that block and We Built rents two of those houses already. And so it's not even across the street where We Built is, it's adjacent, perfectly adjacent to the property. And so we're not talking about like a long distance and if we're, if it's not a lockdown facility and there's not a fence out the back, someone could walk out the back of the detox center, right? And they would be in the We Built community already. And the point of We Built is we're not a lockdown community. In fact, we're not allowed to lock it down because of disability rights issues about locking people into their facilities. And so our, our property is open to the public because it has to be open for the people to get out, the disabled, disabled people to get out. And so it's you know, this is a particularly bad group, groups of people to mix together, like you know, it could be better to, any other kind of group that would be buying that facility would be better for the We Built community and the disabled community of Portland than it would be to have people that are, you know, known, taking advantage of vulnerable populations and the We Built community is particularly vulnerable. I don't know if you've ever met them, but they're very naive. And even though they're twenty to forty-five years old, their emotional capacity is around a ten to twelve-year-old in general. And the other thing is that, you know, the We, We Built is a community, it's, it's the permanent home. And these people are not going to get better. This is where they're going to live for the rest of their lives. I mean, that's why we built this community and we're fighting to keep it alive is because this is where they're going to live for the rest of their lives. The people in this detox center are going to be transient people that are coming for, it sounded like at most a year, and then they're going to get better and they're going to go on with their lives where, whereas the people that We Built are not going to get better and their life, this is their life right there in that corner is their life.
Thank you for that comment. So coming back to the district advisory committee for North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, I want to say thank you to all of the attendees who came tonight, gave comments and asked great questions. I also want to pause to return to our advisory committee role and ask if there's any at this special meeting, is there any recommendations that we wish to consider? Or are we at the point where we're taking in information? And I'll open up the floor. Calling on Sheila?
I believe that I'm just taking in information at this point in time. I, I do have a question about the number of clients at the is it We Built, at the We Built community?
I think if there's an audience member who can chime in, thank you so much. Note from Peter that they're about twenty-five. And Miranda has clarified their twenty-eight residents. Okay, I'll, Dominic, I will raise my hand and call on myself. Our next district advisory committee meeting will be in August. Is there any action that we need to take or consider prior to that time, or will we have an opportunity to discuss further then?
So Janette, are you, are you talking about the, with the board or just with the DAC? So Janette, are you, are you talking about, um, the, with the board or just within the DAC?
Uh, with the DAC specifically.
Well, we don't meet until after the board has this August seventh meeting, right? And so the trajectory, I mean, I don't guess they're gonna be buying the property that night, but the trajectory will be set that night. And so if we have concerns about the price being paid, I mean, we maybe wanna raise that.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying the timeline. I'm sorry, calling on Sheila?
I mean, I believe that there's nobody here tonight representing North Clackamas Parks that is in a position. To answer the question about if it's been, um, put on the market, the, the property. So I guess that's just something I'm curious about is that if North Clackamas Parks and Recreation are interested in selling the property. Have, have there been other offers and, um, has the property actually been on the market?
The, the property has not been put on the market.
At this point, if the DAC has no additional business to conduct. Um, uh, and thank you for letting me rearrange, um, the agenda. Uh, ad hoc, I wanted to make sure there was time for, um, public comment, ample time for public comment. Um, if there's no additional DAC business to address, then we should adjourn the meeting. And so I'll look for, are there any objections to adjournment or meeting? Anita?
Not, not an objection exactly, but, um, I was just reading some of the comments that keep coming in about. We Built would like to purchase the property and it's just one more thing, piece in the puzzle to look at.
Thank you. So at this point, I don't hear any objections to adjournment. And we will go ahead and adjourn this evening. Uh, thank you all for your time. Thank you for the public comment. Um, and, and take care. We'll see you in August.
You, Dominic, can you get the, you can be able to capture the comments too on the side? Okay, perfect.